Call to order the May 4 special Ellsworth City Council meeting. All councilors, with the exception of Councilor Miller, are present. Just for the public to know that we are meeting live, but we are distance, social distance appropriately, and we will have less than 10 people in the room this evening as well. Also, as we go through our agenda, if you want to present a comment, all you need to do is to send an email to my email address, and I will pick those up throughout the meeting. My email address is dhamilton@ellsworthmain.gov. That's dhamilton@ellsworthmain.gov. So feel free to send me an email, and I will respond to that during the meeting. If you're watching on Facebook, that is not a site that we'll be monitoring for comments, so please, if you have a comment that you want heard, send it to the email address. I would also say, before we start the agenda, I just want to acknowledge something that I'm sure the other councilors may have comments as well, but I just think that the whole city of Ellsworth just really needs to recognition in terms of how everybody has managed this very difficult situation. The amount of going out of your way to help other people, the consideration, the thoughtfulness, whether it's making masks, helping out neighbors, you just see this community coming together. Long before there were any kind of mandates, this community has really just rallied around to do the right thing, to look out for one another. You can see it, and there's been a lot of sacrifice that's been made during the last month and a half in the community, and I just, I think that it's just something that should be noted and certainly appreciated. So with that, councilors who are sitting at this other table, who are back to to me, all you need to do is raise your hand, flag, yell at whatever to try to recognize you as we go through. So before we move into the formal agenda, would any other councilors like to say anything?
I think you said it all.
Okay, then we will move right into the agenda. So council order number 05200, request to approve a contract for the Oak Street project.
Yes, the Public Works Director is, that's what we're gonna call her.
One thing this whole episode has taught us some patience, hasn't it?
No.
Nothing happens quickly in Zoom.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Otherwise, after the tone, please record your name. You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting.
Lisa?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're up.
Hi, Kami.
Hi.
Okay, Lisa, you are all set.
Okay, Lisa, you are set.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the overlay paving of Oak Street. On Thursday, the 23rd, we had a bid opening for overlaying Oak Street. Five bids were requested, and only two were received. So I believe you guys should have all the documentation hopefully in front of you, because I can't see you, so I'm gonna assume you can. I am requesting tonight to award the contract to Northeast Paving, AKA Lane, for the amount of $153,592. Lane has a history of working with the city and doing well, and I think they will do an excellent job for the project. It is just a overlay at this point to make the road smoother while we work on the process of trying to work with the DOT on a longer-term fix for the road. But obviously, that is gonna come at a cost exceptionally higher than $153,000 to redo the road. So this is our idea to do this while we work towards the larger goal of having it rebuilt.
Is there?
No questions.
Is there a motion? There's a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the Oak Street paving project to Northeast Paving for the attached pricing and allow the city manager to sign all necessary documentation. Contract to be funded from local roads capital improvement account, 90909-0059-001.
Second. You have motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Are we done with that?
No, we have, I believe Gary Fortier is on the line.
He's part of the executive.
Session later.
Yes, I am.
Yep.
Yeah, if you could mute Gary and, and.
We'll be back at, just, we'll just mute you now and then join in a few minutes.
For what?
The executive session, Gary. We're still in open session now.
Yeah, I know. I've been on mute. I'm listening to you as a public person.
Yep.
Okay, then, yeah, we just wanted you to know that we're gonna move into the other agenda. Okay, so item number three, discussion on the upcoming budget workshops. So what I wanted to do tonight is to just try to get a schedule for our budget meetings and a process so that we can start that review. We're not really behind. This is, we usually start this time. The other, the other piece of it is that there will be a lot of unknowns with this budget, that we're not really going to have all the information. Probably the later we go, the more information we'll have, hopefully, and there'll still be some missing pieces. What I want to throw out for part of the discussion is, would it make sense to have the department heads have some meetings that are a little bit longer and consecutive to get the presentation out to us and then use the remaining time in the, between May, the rest of this month and June, to really dive into, into the budget and have that time to vet it more than just taking it slowly like we usually do with one presentation, then come back the next Monday. And usually, we take three or four Mondays to get through the presentations, and I was thinking about trying to condense that to give us more time to work the budget. But, so that's, that's what I wanted to throw out, at least get a schedule, but wanted to find out how you want to proceed with that.
Are we going to do those live? Are we going to do those as Zoom?
That is open to the council.
John, what was your question?
Zoom or live?
Live or Zoom?
Like tonight.
No Zoom.
Here.
Yeah, I agree. Please, no Zoom.
Is there any, anybody have a different perspective on that? I think we will obviously need to structure it so that the public can participate in the same manner that they, they can this evening, and we won't be able to have more than 10 people in the room to make sure and keep that distancing. But other than that.
When you say 10 people, will you be able to shuffle some in and shuffle some out?
Yes.
Yes.
We would have staff out in the building, call them in as needed.
Seems reasonable.
Pretty thin crowd with the seven councilors and the manager with 10, so you're gonna have two other additional people coming and going?
And the deputy.
One, if finance.
Yeah, so one person.
Are there any, the governor's rules, are these hard and fast on the 10 people? Are there any exceptions that can be made in order to bump it up to 12, 14, 15 for something like this? I'm not aware of any.
I'm not aware of any at this point.
Is this our?
No, this is, the governor's rule at this point is that you can't have gatherings exceeding 10 people. And since this is not a business, this is a gathering, I think that would conflict if we had more than 10.
We could set up, we could set up the screen in the auditorium for staff, you know, to watch and come in as, as needed, one presenter at a time is really what it would come down to, but the rest could be spaced out in the auditorium and follow it along and come in as needed.
Anything would be better than Zoom.
Yeah, that's your alternative.
It's only one presenter at a time anyway, so.
Yeah.
I think it would be fun.
That's true. That's true.
And any colleagues they wanted as support could be up in the auditorium and called on as necessary if they needed to address some specific thing. But generally, it's the department head.
Okay, so that will be our plan then. We will meet live, and now the hard part will be, what type of schedule do you want to establish?
Well, just to start it off, maybe just use the Monday format that we used before.
So consecutive, so next Monday is the 11th. We have our regular meeting on the 18th, and then we have the 25th, so there'll be three Mondays.
25th, is that a holiday?
Is that a holiday?
That's Memorial Day.
It's canceled.
You may be here by yourself.
Awesomely. So, okay, so we've had the 11th and the 18th of this month, so we would have two weeks. We could do it later in that week, the Memorial Day.
There's another reason why we couldn't do Wednesday or Tuesday.
So we could possibly schedule one presentation in the regular meeting on the 18th, maybe have a portion, I think this, maybe the school board presentation or, or we, or not.
You could do the school board presentation as part of the council meeting. And normally, the normal schedule is for the school board to be on the council agenda for the May meeting after presenting the budget committee. This year, because the vote has been delayed until July 14th, there's no urgency to that. As a matter of fact, I talked to the council chair today, and presentation in May and consideration on July 15th, excuse me, June 15th, city council meeting, which provides adequate time to, you know, prepare everything for the, for the July 14th vote.
So if we looked at Monday, May 11th, does that work for, does that work?
Yeah, I'm available all.
What, what days don't, doesn't, won't work for you?
I'm available all the Mondays in May.
All Mondays? Are there any other days of the week, or just?
For May, I'm available Mondays and Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, so if we did Monday, May 11th, the 18th is our regular meeting, would anybody be opposed to trying to do a meeting that, on the 20, Thursday, the 21st? So we'd end up with two meetings that week.
All right, so the 11th?
So the 11th is a budget.
Okay, six, 6 o'clock meeting?
Six o'clock, yes.
What's the next one you want to do?
And then the 18th is our regular meeting on the 18th, and I was looking at the 21st, Thursday, the 21st at 6:00.
What is in there?
Yes?
I just wanted to let you know I'll have those budget books done Thursday, so they'll all be available on Friday. I can either have them delivered, or I'm more than welcome to come into City Hall to pick them up.
Delivery.
Delivery.
Actually, the police department could deliver them under the circumstances.
Yeah, so the 11th, the 21st.
And then the Tuesday, Thursday, the 28th at 6:00. So. Does that work for me? We'll schedule those three, try to get through as much, and then that leaves us several weeks in June to either finish up, and we, one of the things we'll have to do is to, with the capital, after that first meeting, we're gonna need to really think about that process. So I haven't reconvened the capital planning committee, simply because with everything going on, that really has kind of turned that process upside down a bit. So we'll talk a lot more in that first meeting about the next steps with capital planning, because I think that's gonna be obviously a significant issue for us.
I can't write the 28th, it's my birthday.
I'll bring you a cake.
Okay.
Your statement of with everything going on is probably better stated with nothing going on.
Yes. Okay, so that, so we have May 11th, 6 o'clock, the 21st, 6 o'clock, 28th, 6 o'clock, and the 18th is our regular.
Sounds like fun.
All right. It's in my, in my memory. I'm good now, thanks, Trudy.
I have one more question. Can we get together or chat tomorrow to decide how you want it to, do you want public, all public safety, public work, excitement? Because I'm gonna have to contact the staff to make sure that they're available that day.
Sure, so I, I'll be in touch with you, and we can figure that out.
It's your first budget cycle, Michelle.
Yes.
When they wheel the, with a handcart, bring you the book, you're gonna see it's gonna be a lot of fun.
All right, thank you. That was not as painful as I thought it was gonna be. Okay, item number four, council order number 052001, request to approve a resolution. I'm gonna replace the term resolution with letter regarding response to the governor's reopening plan. So as the councilors know, you have received a copy of a draft letter of what, which we're going to be discussing, with recommendations to the governor regarding her phased-in approach to reopening the economy. So I will open it up for discussion and comments.
I thought it was very well-written, and it was presented in such a way that it's polite, I think is, is a good word, for not getting into anybody's face or anything like that. And I think you stressed the idea of, we're still all a team.
So I probably should just back up one second to make sure the public knows what, what we're referring to in terms of the letter. I won't read the whole letter, but let me just state that over the course of the last several weeks, I've had an opportunity to sit on some Zoom meetings with businesses, I've had conversations with business leaders, emails from businesses to talk about the concern around being able to reopen. And when the plan came out, there was an immediate reaction by the business community regarding the plan and feeling that in large part, it's, has a lot of arbitrary elements to it. What we know is that at the real expense of small business, some businesses, larger businesses have been able to open while the small businesses have not been able to. So there's a number of concerns, and one of the things that I would really want to stress is that this, I haven't heard any business owner say, just let me open my doors and, and move forward. What they've, what they've all said is, let me open my doors and we'll do it safely. We will protect the community. We know how to protect the community, we want to protect the community, and furthermore, the consumers are going to demand that anyway. So the businesses in our community are ready, they're prepared to provide that safety, just like every other business that has been operating since this pandemic started. Businesses have been operating, and they've been doing it safely, and there's no reason why other businesses can't do the same. And so the, the phased-in plan really presented some significant roadblocks, to the point that, and one of the biggest areas is this notion that anybody visiting the state this summer would have to go through a 14-day quarantine, which effectively will eliminate tourism season for this area. Not to mention, it's very difficult to enforce, and it will shut down lodging, and in fact, one of the things that happened almost immediately when that was announced was that people started canceling their reservations for the summer. And so businesses have already taken a hit. So this, our letter that, that we're submitting is, is not about being an adversary with the governor, it's about being an ally from the perspective of our businesses have ideas, our community have, have ideas. And what we've seen from the facts and the data is that the facts for our rural community is that we've had a total of 10 confirmed cases. I think we all know that there's probably many more cases that aren't confirmed, but we also can then look at, well, what is the severity of the people who have contracted COVID in this community? And what we know is that of the 10 people that have contracted it, we have one person who's been hospitalized, and we've had nine people recovered. So the impact on our community has been very small, and that is in large part because of, one, being rural, but also because of the safety that has been put into this community, which, yes, when there are more people here will be more difficult, but it also represents our ability to be able to provide safe and effective resources with a lot of businesses that have continued to be open and many more that need to be open. And at the end of the day, if we don't address this, if we do not have a change in this phased-in approach, we will have people who will lose their livelihood, we will have people who will be permanently impacted for many, many years to come. And what, what we are expressing to the governor is that we want to be part of the discussion and part of the solution, and that's what this letter is representing. So that's for, in summarized fashion, what we are suggesting, what we are presenting to the governor, and what we're discussing this evening. And I've received numerous emails from businesses very much supporting this, and from citizens who are not business owners, who are supporting this notion of being a partner, getting a seat at the table, and really looking for, for some change and doing it in a safe way. Councilwoman.
I understand the risks, but the numbers have not played out. The sheer volume of patients that we were anticipating has not happened, whether it's because we closed things down, or because Mainers are very good at following the recommendations, or, or both. But again, those numbers just did not realize themselves. And some of these restrictions, like you, you can't go to a golf course, but now you can go to a golf course, but you can't take the same cart. Well, what if you same, came in the same car, but you can't take the same cart? Like, they're, they're not logical. And I really think that having the residents having a voice, or having, you know, the businesses be heard, they, they really need to be heard as far as everything. You know, this is about not just safety, but it's also about free liberty. We, we, this is the 200th anniversary of the state of Maine, and here we are in lockdown. That's not liberty. That's not what we fought for. So thank you for writing the letter.
I agree with your thought process of trying to get her to move a little bit off-center, because I do think that there's certain social responsibility for all of us, and that the businesses will be careful, but we as individuals also need to be cognizant of what we're doing, as in wearing the mask or the gloves and your cleanliness. I think we're all responsible for our own fate, and I think probably it'd be a good idea that the governor let us move ahead a little bit. So if she doesn't, there's gonna be so many people, and huge trouble financially, and not just the businesses, but the people that work for the businesses. Because this continues for another month, and it's gonna be totally downhill. There's too many folks that wait for that paycheck every week, and this continues on, and the devastation from that's gonna be far worse than what we're gonna see in anything else.
Do they even know what's gonna happen with all the J-1 visas? Are they even gonna come this year to help with the, with everything? I mean.
I'd say that's very much up in the air.
I would just like to also comment that in no way is this letter, this is not a political statement, this is not a party issue, and in no way does this represent a political ideology. This is simply the fact that the plan that's been submitted does not meet the needs of our community and our businesses, and what we are putting forward is, is an opportunity to bring together the community and to do it in a safe way. I would also further say that in terms of us, our role as a city, is that we, we do need to help to support the safety of the community. And if we can do that in a way of supporting businesses as they roll this out, we might not have the answers, but we might have the clout in terms of, if there's a need for purchasing in bulk PPE, maybe we can help support those kinds of activities. Our goal here as a city is not to manage businesses, run businesses, but support the safety of the community as they, as they come online, and I think we can play a role in that way. But again, that's, this is, this is in no way a political issue. I mean, it's just very much an issue of what is the plan, and how could that plan be improved for the community and for the conditions that we face.
I think it's very important to have not just what we've done here, or what you've done here, but more people speaking out in a responsible way to get more ideas out there. It will become a grassroots movement, so to speak. And I think John had a good point, too, and that is that if we all do what we're supposed to do with our masks and our gloves and so forth, and some people choose not to, you know, sometimes you just have to let people make their own mistakes. Unfortunately, it could impact other people.
I'm just checking emails since when.
I think it's a very, very well-written letter. There really isn't anything in it that I would change. One of my other concerns beside businesses, I've had three different families mention to me in the last month or so. One of the things that they miss that is near and dear to them is not being able to go to church, for them to practice their faith. And not only are the businesses closed, but the churches are closed as well. I think that needs to change, and like businesses, I think the churches can come up with some novel approaches to keep everybody safe.
You could propose that.
Councilwoman.
And it's too bad the kids, you know, as far as like eighth grade graduation and senior graduation, I feel so bad. You know, my son has never come up to me and said, I want to go to school. I want to go to school. Like, he's always, I don't want to go to school. But now he says, I would give anything just to go to school. And I said, well, why don't you take a bike ride? And he says, I only go for a bike ride to go to school or see my friends, and I can't do this. It's so sad. No eighth grade field trip, no eighth grade dance, no eighth grade graduation, no senior graduation, no senior prom. This is tragic, and I really hope that when this is all said and done, we do something special for these kids that have been looking forward to these, these events in their lives that have been taken away from them.
And you know, people who are our age, who have had children and now have grandchildren and so forth.
and so forth, those are the things we remember. You don't remember too much what happened in algebra class unless somebody threw something. But you remember all the things that, that made school a social event and the dances and so forth. It's wonderful to reminisce about things like that, and it's a shame that they won't have those things.
So I have an email from Nick Navari with the question, who is the letter from? I'm assuming it's not on behalf of Ellsworth citizens. And so the answer that I would provide, and certainly welcome other comments, but Nick, this, this is a letter from, from the City Council on behalf representing opinions and comments that we've heard, but it's, it is a coming from the council to the governor.
Sounds good.
So further, further discussion comments? So let me just end then with the statement to emphasize that this is not without the recognition for the safety and for the, for the health and welfare of, of the community and citizens. And, and I think there, there are certainly things that we will continue to, to want to see in the community and, and we need to be doing to prevent the spread of this and to prevent our vulnerable populations. And when you look at the data and look at the facts, there are populations in the state that are vulnerable to, to COVID more than others. So we certainly want to take the steps to protect those individuals, and there are ways to do that, and there's ways to open businesses at the same time. So this very much is a holistic approach that, that will address both. And just remember, please speak into the mics because on TV you can't hear.
Is your resolution to approve sending this letter to the governor?
Yes.
Is that what you moved?
I, I moved to approve the resolution and forward it to the governor with the statement.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. And so there's a comment that came in, so I want to make sure we answer it. Nick Navari asked, why was the public never invited for comment on this letter? Perhaps the letter could have contained not only the prospect of encouraging opening, but also encouraging relief funds. So that's what this meeting, that's why this meeting is being held and what, one of the reasons for the special session was to provide opportunities for the public to weigh in and to give feedback. Unfortunately, the situation is very much time-sensitive, so it was one that we needed to move quickly on. But that's why we had this meeting this evening. As far as encouraging relief funds, I certainly would think that this is an ongoing discussion. This, this letter is just the beginning in terms of raising some points and hopefully creating an opportunity for, for dialogue, and we can raise other issues as, as this moves forward.
Personally, I, I think that we've included everything that should be included without expanding it too much. You could end up with a long list of things and end up with a document that's many pages long. I think this is nice and concise, and it, it's, it's a starting point.
And then Nick Navari wrote, just wrote, then why was my comment read after voting? Nick, your comment came in after there was a motion and a second. It was in the process. It was not open at that point for further discussion, but I think that I answered your, your question. It would not have changed the outcome of the vote. So with that, let's, motion to move into executive session to discuss the condition acquisition of the use of real or personal property permanently attached to real property or interests therein or disposition of publicly held property or economic development, only if premature disposition of information would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the body or agency in accordance with MRS A Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6C, and executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRS A Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Gary Fortier, for the record, I've been invited as a member of the solar committee for item number five. I am alone in my office, no other people are here, and I will be disconnecting at the end of number five before you get to number six.
Great. Thank you, Gary, for clarifying that. That's important. And just for the public to know that we will, we will not be reporting out after the executive session. Thank you.